All right, number six, starting with one, start the meeting. Uh, we're going to start off, uh, with number two, the roll call.
Um, okay, my name is Allison Sanders, I'm City Secretary, I'll go ahead and read aloud the roll call. Uh, Corey Glassburn.
Present.
Kim Williams.
Here.
Colby Caper.
Here.
Will Rutledge.
Here.
Brad Snoddy.
Here.
Charles Scarborough.
Here.
Eric Stevens, City Administrator.
Present.
And, um, Ju- Julie Castwell, our, uh, our City Sec- or Attorney.
All right, for question number three, citizens' comments. Uh, the City Council welcomes public comments. People wishing to address the City Council should have signed up prior to the meeting, uh, be, be, uh, called, uh, called to order. Uh, a five-minute timeframe will be adhered to for those addressing their concerns as comments from the public are not. Hosted agenda items for Texas Open Meetings ask prohibited City Council members in that from discussing or responding to these comments during council meetings. Also want to please note that, uh, there will be no, we will not entertain any kind of side conversations, interrupting, let this set as a warning. If there are interruptions or conversations going on, you will be asked to leave. With that being said, I'll turn it over to you.
Um, we do have several citizens, um, Allison has the list, you can go ahead.
Um, okay, number one, if you would like to stand or just stop at that podium, is, uh, Brian and Samantha Perkins.
Lead off.
I will start the, uh, timer on the straight, my hand in your clavicle, so.
Unfortunately and embarrassingly, I don't come to City Council meetings. Apologize, um, also a guy that doesn't like to sit here or sit at home behind and rap too much. I got some news this week, um, that disturbed me, it hurt my heart, um, and I still don't know for a hundred percent true if it's, or if it is a hundred percent true, because I had to go talk to the guy. I just want to publicly say that I one hundred percent appreciate and I support the job that our city manager has done. Um, his energy, his, uh, his genuine want to make things happen. Um, today, I spent some time on Mariners Waymore in the yard, uh, me and my son, we drive our little players, when we go over there, and there's, there's two hundred people in the park. Um, the park has been there for a long time, I've been in Lakeside City since two thousand and nine. That park was, you know, Sam's a great guy, I love Sam to death, I love him, he's a great guy, he re- he loaned us Roundup, he loaned us anything we could to make those ball fields better than they were when we started, when our kids were little. Our kids are grown and don't participate over there anymore, but the park is in the best shape that it's been in, since two thousand and nine. Um, ditches, um, drainage problems behind my house, uh, we hired, as the city, we hired a contractor to come in and clean out ditches and fix drainage problems that had haunted residents on the curve. I live on the curve, on Royal Road, it has haunted us for a long time, um, those things have been improved, um, there's, there's more than I can, than I can say, I didn't prepare any notes or anything like that, sorry about that, but I just want to tell you, Eric, I love you, brother. You have worked your tail off, um, your, your energy and your enthusiasm is great, um, I, I just want to publicly say to everybody here that my heart is, Eric has worked his tail off for this city. And been energetic and, and got so many things done that us as parents or residents or busy people or whatever weren't willing to do, I know he's a paid employee, but the guy's fired up and he got a lot though.
So I'm sure we use most of our time, but I just want to say that, um, I didn't even realize we had a city manager, and it's not, that's not a shot or anything to the previous guy, um, but before we got this guy, I didn't know it was really even a thing. I knew Sam and I knew he came around and he, you know, gave us Roundup or whatever the things were that he did, and, and we appreciated that, but before then, I, I didn't know it was really a thing. And then Eric started and, um, things started changing, things started getting better and, you know, you just see action. And it'll be a shame if he is run off by a few negative comments that are being made or things that are being done. He's a great person and I feel like he's done a great job here for our city and our community, and I, I just want you to know that our family appreciates you.
Thank you.
And we would love to see you stay and have you change your mind if it hasn't already been set down, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, and, and Jenny, and your, your girls, and just.
Thank you.
Be strong, because we appreciate you and we see what you've done.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll finish it up, if we got just a few more seconds, Lakeside City is a great community, folks, we live in a society of extremism right now, um, everybody has a, a victim or everybody has an enemy. And it makes you feel good about focusing all of your maybe insufficiencies or whatever you have towards this certain enemy and you can mouth them and it makes you feel better, it makes you feel justified. And it's not just Lakeside City, this is the United States of America, it's happening on the world right now. A lot of it's social media and all this other crap, whatever you want to say, but extremism is going to kill us. And guys, it's killing us in Lakeside City, at least in my opinion right now, with a great guy that's a great city manager that works his tail off for us, so. At the polls or in your daily life in Lakeside City or at your house or whatever, guys, just pray for getting rid of some extremism to where we can actually love one another and disagree, you know, slap somebody in the face if you have to, that's fine, but just come together as, I don't know, it's a great place to live and, and thank you, Lakeside City, thank you. We love it here, we're not leaving.
For the mayor.
Um, okay, uh, our second, um, request to speak participation form is Mr. Chase Thomas.
Good evening. I have a message here from J. Ramello, and I'm going to read it as he wrote. Good evening, Council and residents, my name is J. Ramello and I reside at one eighteen Lands End. I'm sorry I am unable to attend tonight's meeting, but I appreciate the opportunity to have my thoughts read and passed on this evening. I heard the news of our city manager Eric Stevens submitting his letter of resignation, yet was not completely surprised. And I was extremely concerned to hear of his decision. When I moved to Lakeside City three and a half years ago, Eric was one of the first city officials I met. He has worked through multiple issues we've had, septic, water, et cetera. If I ever had an issue with, that I, I questioned, Eric is my go-to person for sure. I can't say that I'm completely surprised by his decision, because I can't imagine having to put up with the constant barrage of unacceptable situations that a small group of citizens continue to concoct. Eric has consistently bent over backwards in any situation I have seen him have to tackle. Our city is most definitely a better community because of his work as our city manager, and I sure hope this small group of citizens doesn't ruin that for our future. The City Council needs to address this small group of citizens with greater force and continue to back Eric as our city manager. I'm in hopes that the city does not accept his resignation, and they continue to support and back him against these individuals that are creating unnecessary drama for our community. Thank you for your time this evening, J. Ramello.
Um, the, our third, uh, request to speak participation form is from Kim Snoutter.
My name's Kim, and, uh, I've lived out here thirty years, guys. In those thirty years, I can honestly say that I've only known the name of one other city administrator. And I just wanted to say how much I appreciate you, Eric, I want to thank you for being approachable, thank you for listening, thank you for concern, and thank you for getting things done. Um, we moved out here when our kids were babies just because of the Holiday School District, we wanted to be in that good school district, not because of the community, we knew nothing about Lakeside City. Being out here, uh, planning on retiring like everybody else, move away, move to the lake, that's our idea of retirement. Since the last several years, my husband has retired, and we set down roots, we're not going anywhere just because of this community, and I know you are a big part of that in the last several years, and I pray that y'all. Don't accept it, do whatever you have, tie him down, because I really appreciate it, my family appreciates you.
Um, our fourth request to speak participation form is, um, Mr. Not Baby.
Evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. My wife just moved out here, we live at three eleven Driftwood, just moved out here June first, uh, haven't met everybody, um, I can say I grew up in Wichita Falls thirty-seven years, born and raised. I never want to move back after living out here, um, he would be the number one reason why, not to mention my awesome neighbors and our awesome community. Had a, a small incident, I had a possum come into our garage, got tangled in all my fishing gear, I called him three weeks after I moved in, I didn't know what to do. We don't have animal control here, I'm the city guy, I'm adjusting to the country life, as I call it, moved out here to get into the Holiday School District, we love it, there's nothing wrong about this community. Eric dropped what he was doing, I made a phone call, he dropped what he was doing, he came to my house, helped me out, I needed an extra set of hands to get this possum out of all my fishing gear. You wouldn't find it anywhere else, danger wouldn't find it in Wichita Falls, um, and I've, I've only known him since we moved out here, he's been the biggest asset to our community from what I've seen, especially at the park, the, uh, the, the activities during the summertime. So, I just want to throw my two cents in, I've got a message from, uh, another resident whom I don't know. Now I'm going to read it verbatim how he said it. My name is Guy Pryor, and I live at nine hundred Shoreline Drive, we were looking for a place to move to, place to move three years ago, and Lakeside City beat out anywhere else in the great nation. We picked it for the community and its people. First person I met when I moved here was Eric Stevens, I met him when I got my water turned on, and he struck me as the most caring, good-hearted person I have ever met on any level of government. Over the past three years, he offered to help me tear down my destroyed trampoline after a huge storm. He checks on me and my family regularly because he knows we have no family around this area, he always does something special during Christmas. He always has a smile on his face and an ear to anyone who will listen, he fixes small problems all the time and makes damn sure we all live in an amazing community. To allow him to leave is a huge travesty, yet, yeah, the city will go by and will get on, but it shouldn't have to. You will not find a better city employee than Eric Stevens, his family and himself are everything that's great about Lakeside City. I urge you to not accept his resignation, his time should not be, his time should not be done. Thank you for allowing my words to be heard, Guy Pryor, nine hundred Shoreline. Just to basically echo Mr. Pryor, um, Eric, I, I, I found out last week as well, and I was extremely heartbroken, I was extremely disappointed. He's got the drive and the, and the determination to make his community, which is ours as well, a much better, safer place to live, and especially in the times that we're living in. Everybody's coming out this way, we were part of it, we wanted our daughter to go to Holiday, uh, School District, she loves it out there, we're not moving. We, we've set our roots, we are not moving, we've got the best neighbors around, I've only known Eric since June first, and Eric, I, I, I don't want you to lose, uh, lose out on what you're doing, because you're, you're full steam ahead, brother. You're moving our community in the right direction, and I compare our community to, everybody's seen, um, uh, what's the, what's the show, the baseball show?
Sandline.
Sandline. It's like you're living back in the nineties, we don't have to worry about our children, we have, we have security cameras, one way in, one way out, both the west side and the east side. That's the biggest, best thing for our neighborhood, our eight-year-old daughter can take off, ride with her, her gang of little friends, and we don't have to worry about them, other parents take care of their kids, it's like the nineties. That's why we love it out here, and Eric is the biggest part of that, as well as you guys, um, so we like, we, you know, I don't want him to, I don't want him to leave, and I hope you guys don't accept his resignation either. Um, but that's, that's all we have to do, so, thanks for listening.
Our, um, fourth, uh, request to speak participation form is, um, Ms. Lindsay Reer.
That's number five. No, you're good, I did write mine out because I knew I probably wouldn't get through it in the fifth, so, um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, I've lived in Lakeside City my basically entire life. My parents built their home at three oh one Dowell in seventy-nine, right after the tornado, and aside from a few years of living in Wichita Falls, Lakeside City is home. Um, it's a wonderful community, I grew up out here, um, and it's a community we knew we always wanted to raise our children in. I've known Eric and his family for years and had the pleasure to work with Eric, uh, multiple occasions, multiple projects, we both worked for the city of Wichita Falls, and during every time I worked with Eric. I found Eric to be hardworking, of sound judgment, committed and focused on his personal and his community goals. I've watched as Eric has brought this same passion and commitment to Lakeside City as our city administrator. Eric has proven to be a leader and has been able to ensure that this community continues to progress and improve, which has not always been the case in recent years. Eric not only brings the citizens of this community a vision of progress, but he also understands that that's a bolt of the infrastructure to make things happen. Lakeside City has grown in many respects recently, and I would want to make sure that we keep moving forward. I understand why Eric feels the need to tender his resignation, and this deeply saddens me. Eric and his family, not to mention other city representatives, have been slandered across social media, been accused of unproven misconducts, and had their personal and professional lives run through the mud by keyboard warriors that want to censor anyone that does not agree with them. I support free speech, I do not condone any group that would threaten any of our residents or our citizens with unfounded accusations and blame lines, especially under the cloud of a private social media group where no one can defend their accusations. Eric, it has always been clear to me that you love this city, you take your role as our city manager seriously, and that you and your family have sacrificed a lot for this position and this community. I believe you have always done what you believe is right, and that individually and as an entire governing body have protected this community and made it better. I urge you to please do not let the threats or the intimidation allow you to give up. Please have the strength to resist the pressure to make this decision based on the voice of a very select few. There are so many more of us that share your common values and this community's need for the common good. Please continue to give us the benefit of your leadership, your wisdom, and your experience. Thank you.
Um, request to speak participation form, uh, number six, um, Mr. Lindsey Anderson.
I had to write mine down too, I'm going to be good and short. Everybody's pretty much said everything that we really need to say, but I've lived in Lakeside for about fifteen years, came from Plano. I was immediately grown to this area because of the community. You can do things, you can be friends, you can have friends, my mom lives in the same house she's lived in in a long time, and she does not know my neighbors. I know my neighbors, I'm right there. I'm right there, so, with Eric's leadership, I've seen over the last several years lots of improvements. Improvements made to the septic, the water tower, the drainage system, and just an overall improvement of everything in Lakeside. Good job, man. So, of course, he's here for the building of this building. My personal observation is that Lakeside City is growing and attracting families, that's important, families. It's exactly what we need, because the more families we have up here, the more we'll have that park in use, the more we'll have everybody coming together, making this more than just a number seven city in Texas to live in. Another good job, and I think you had a big part of that. I think all of that is from the solid leadership we've had. Eric, as a friend and a citizen, urge you not to resign. Please stick around and keep us going.
Uh, um, number seven, request to speak participation form is, um, Mr. Swat, uh, sorry, Benj.
Of course, I got to follow those two. They have, uh, they have said a lot, my name's Scott, this is my wife, Carolyn.
Standing in support.
Yes. So, uh, I've, I've been here since nineteen ninety-two, and I've seen, uh, Lakeside grow and just flourish. Uh, served on the volunteer fire department, uh, which I only say that because folks that are in this room that serve in the volunteer fire department, they do it in a selfless way. They do it to serve this community without beating their chest and say, hey, look at me, they serve in the servant's heart, for what's best for this community. And I, and I appreciate that, and I think that needs to be said more and more, but along with those that serve, or these council members and the mayor, that is part of what makes Lakeside City so great. But not only the council, but that man standing right there, sitting right there, sorry, I'm standing, but I'm about to say that. And we go to the same party, so, we've got that, we've got that going for us. So, I, I echo what these other folks have already said, and I'd be repeating the praise, but I, I want Eric to hear it from my voice, from our lips. And that is this, we knew Eric before he took this position, and who, standing in this room, doesn't have things that if they would have had social media when you were in junior high, you would not be sitting in the position you are right now. And this guy has, has risen above that because his heart has been changed. And because of that heart change, then he has become the man that he is, and the leader that he is, and trustworthy, I'll tell you, uh, we all went through it, right, the whole ice storm? And, uh, we were some of the last ones to get our, our electricity back, and we s- uh, spun our wheels trying to get electricity here for a couple of days, actually, and then finally I called Eric, Eric, can you help? And anytime that I picked up the phone to call Eric, he has been responsive. He has been, uh, hi- his desire is to take care of the folks that are in this community. And that shows a leader, that shows somebody equality, when you put somebody else on board in order above yourself, so, you know, we all know, right? The, the phrase, love your neighbor? And in loving your neighbor, I think Eric has done a fantastic job of being that representative, of loving your neighbor well. Allison, um, I'll, I'll, I'll end with this, and my Sharon wants to say something, and, uh, so then she'll edit this right when I'm ready. But to, to me, uh, you see a, a, a situation where a man or woman starts to position a job, and you, then you judge where they left that. And what Eric has done, when he came in, and if he chooses to still step away, then I think Eric deserves an applause because Lakeside City is better now than it was when he began.
And I hate speaking in front of anybody, but it's worth it, for Eric and Jenny, um, just wanted to speak to his character, you know, take away the, 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 the position, everything that everybody's got to say, he's just a man of character and integrity and, um, the kind of friends you want to have your back. And I think he and Jay made a dynamic duo with what they've done in this community, and I know we just had some friends that moved in, um, Lakeside not too long ago, and the first name she said was, I called Eric and told him we needed so-and-so and, and he goes, oh, I'll call so-and-so and get that done, and she goes, oh, we are not in the big city anymore. But she wanted to call people by name, and it was, it was just really special, and we had the opportunity of young couples come play at the park, every one of them says, I wish we could get a house out here, we wish we lived out here.
I know, Eric, we love you, man, thanks for the job.
Um, okay, our number eight request to speak participation form is Ms. Jane Stevens.
Good evening, Council and Mayor, as some of you know, I have served faithfully as the Lakeside City Events Committee Chairman for the last four years. In that time, I've met so many wonderful residents who then came along the events committee and helped develop, grow, and put on some amazing events that this community has ever seen. The ladies and families that have come together to show their full support of this committee and community are some of the most amazing people that I've ever met. The residents that participated in the event showed their support, and I'm so thankful for every one of you that ever came to one of our events. Um, I have been so honored to serve in this position, but again, unfortunately, due to the small group of people, I've decided to put a target on my family's back, and with the resignation of Eric as city manager, I feel it is my responsibility to step down as the chairman for the Lakeside City Events Committee. It has pained my heart in so many ways to have to come to this decision, but I have to consider the best interests of not only my family, but those that are residents that have become my dear friends. These people have harassed my family and my friends for a reason that we have yet to fully comprehend or understand. I pray that our residents seek the truth when things are said and not listen to the false accusations. I pray that they stand up against these naysayers and watch the community grow and prosper, because that is what is being done, and that is what these people up here want done. I pray that you continue to follow what your current council is moving towards, and I also pray that you continue to support your current council and vote very wisely. This is not a win for this small group of negative people, it is a true loss for the residents of Lakeside City. Two people who love this community and have put all their energy have been beaten down. Lakeside City residents, I encourage you to stand up and shut this small bird down. Thank you for your time and support, I would like to read a statement from one of our community residents and committee members. Kelly Bligh. Like most of you, I love living in Lakeside, everyone looks out for one another, you know who your neighbors are, and everyone still says hello when you pass. The reason this city is so great is because of our leadership. Eric Stevens has done so much for our community since becoming city administrator, repaired the water tower, improved our park playground, and added lighting to the trail around the park so it's safer for us to be out there. He also oversaw the construction of our new VFD and city offices and many more things that have come that I have failed to mention. He works day in and out to make our community the best because he cares, he wants to keep it the best. He wants a great place to raise his own kids and family, Eric is always the first person to step up if anyone needs help. Losing him would be a huge loss to our community, and we will never find someone that cares about this community as much as he does. I hate that we, as a community, have allowed a small, select, few group of people to try and tarnish his name and make his life miserable. I know the truth, and I know how great Eric is and how it has been for our community, and stand by him and support him a hundred percent. We need to come together as a community and show our support to Eric, this city will not be the same without his leadership.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll let me, there are some things I would like to address in regards to my resignation with your permission, that's okay. Um, first of all, y'all received my letter of resignation, I do thank y'all for the opportunity that y'all have given me in the past two years. When I took this job, I signed up to make a difference for this community and see it become a better place for myself, my family, and the rest of y'all's families, and I do feel that we have reached that. What I did not sign up for was public humiliation, slander, stalking, harassing, migrants from Ann Kennedy driving past my house numerous times a day, taking pictures of my wife out there in the pool, taking pictures of my kids, turning around in my driveway, Ron Kelly, Johnny Morris making up lies and lies and lies, I did not sign up for that. And I, if I was selfish, I would stay here and tape it, but I got to do what is best for my family and for my two little girls. Most of the citizens don't know about it, I do know that y'all, y'all, six people too, have experienced it, um, and it's something that is unacceptable, and I'm not going to stand there and continue to do it, and as a public figure, there's only limited things I can do to combat that. And now, uh, something I would also like to say, um, it's also sad to know that some of the city workers are to the point to where they don't even want to go to these people's homes and work on their septic red light because they will be videoed, filmed, put on Facebook, and slandered. It says a lot about a private group when you do not let members, when you make accusations about people, and then when people question you, you kick them out of the group, you do not let comment in on that, and you do not let anybody else on this book group, from the city, city employees, city administration, city council, and/or their friends be on this group. It's a very sad thing, and I would encourage every one of you residents in here, there is some stuff coming up, there's an election coming up, do your research, look at, find out who it is, the same people that are doing this stuff are the ones out there putting out the new yard signs. I just saw somebody else putting up Jerry Bradshaw's sign, he, if you knew the ridicule and the stuff that he, the fire department, the volunteer fire department was having to go through because of Jerry Bradshaw's brand of, you would be a stammer. I encourage you, do your research, do all your research, find out, find out who these people are. And I, I would say this too, the council is more united than I've ever seen in the past, I've gone back and looked at the minutes, you can go online and see it, our council is more united and making forward progress than I ever did seen before. I encourage you to make the right decision and the right vote when it comes time, you don't want a council up here that's divided, especially. You don't want a council up here that's divided and especially, as we proceed forward. I do rest assured that God will always provide, and I believe he will provide the right person to replace me. The next step in my life might not be another big accomplishment or bringing the city along. Maybe the next thing is to step along the person that y'all decide to appoint and mentor them, teach them, show them the same mistakes that I made and how to learn from them. I know you can learn from mistakes in one of two ways. You can make them yourself, or you can learn from someone else and not make those mistakes. The forward progress that the city is making does not end with me. Someone else will come along and continue to do the same job I do and continue to see the city grow. It is a big thing when the Dallas Morning News lists our city as number seven, as things that wants to move in. And several of the factors that you can see when they do that is they look at the percent of the people who are on their property in which they lived, and then they also look at the percent of the median property taxes that are paid up there. As y'all know, when we set the budget, ninety-eight percent of the people in Lakeside City pay their property taxes. There's two percent that don't. And it's these two percent that are creating this Facebook page and out there slandering us, making stuff up and doing that. And I would encourage you, do not let the ninety-eight, the one percent, two percent people that have these voices discourage you. Focus on the ninety-eight percent. And as we come to a close and go into, I'll say this, a wise man once said, be careful who you let on your ship. Some people will sink the whole ship just because it cannot be the captain. Don't let the one percent that wants to be captain sink the whole ship. That's all I have. Thank y'all.
How's it doing?
Derek, no more. That's been all of your questions.
The brings number four, special agenda executive session. Eric, because it is an important opportunity, I have to give you the option to have an open session or executive session.
I have nothing to add, so if y'all would like to discuss this, I think it would be best for us to be on a unified scale of the direction we're going. And if we could meet an executive session to be unified and come out and present to the citizens what our decision is, I would appreciate at least going to executive council for that.
I'll take an emotion. Are you taking a motion going to the executive session?
Much motion to go to the executive session.
Okay, make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion between council. All is fair to God. I'll say no.
We only got ours under the table. We only got ours under the table.
We only got ours, it was under the table, it was like, I don't know, I don't know, I just thought it, so what do you do for a kid? I just looked at her on Facebook, I'm kind of surprised that the text was that, I was surprised, I'm like, gee, I sat there, I'm like, it's not a seventy, it is a ninety, I think it's eighty-eight, I'm like, tear, it's not you, I'm like... Because if our person won't walk in one out of the door, I mean, it needs to be, it needs to be, but if you want to go, it's me, and if you want to have a drive, it's getting out of there, and you're like, oh, you're the fuck, it's a t-shirt, you would, you'd have to take the walls down.
Is that white, is that white around?
It's white, one of them. And that was not even an animal, that was a lion, it was a lion, but it looks like they're ten years, it looks like you can see it, this is a normal one, I put it in here. It is, it's a little house, but I was from... I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Please don't let this...
I think I know how to criticize people. Looks like...
True.
Like, it's that, that's... But then they keep...
He was like, I've seen everybody.
I mean, there's, it's like, you take one, these are...
I've seen so many cars, like, right, right, right.
I mean, they're all I see is the E-train, the R Vs, like, you know, you can tell the neighbors. That person, I'm just like, oh my god, that's the new logo, how cute is that? I really thought that that would be like a new holiday, it'd be like...
It's every other brand.
Seriously, it's, it's in there for me, and it's a lot of fun, so it's... For the parts, hold on, yeah.
Scavenging at your yard, seven B H. I'm out of my new script, but I know what you're saying.
I'll wait and try to go back into your conference.
Once you go back to the...
Paper makes the most, is there a second?
One second.
You wrote a second, so all's in favor.
Aye.
Close, ain't no? Kind of brings us to special agenda item four B, discussion and consideration, incorporate actions, consulting executive session. Eric, we do this out of respect for you and you. It is not easy to do. We love you guys, we appreciate everything you've done, we echo everything that was said today. But because the respect from us for you guys, we won't accept your letter of resignation, only because if we didn't accept it, it would be accepted automatically in eight days. So please understand, that is not council accepting it, that is just out of respect for you guys.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll wait and start, um, this is just going to give you a few mistakes.
Yeah. I've thought about this all day, and I couldn't ever come up with what to say, so I had to write it down, and I'll be honest with you, I wrote it down about five minutes before I walked in here. But it's pretty much what I believe. Eric, from what I've seen and heard firsthand from citizens and the working class, tax-paying citizens of Lakeside City, you've brought us up to date on all forms of infrastructure in this tight-knit community. That does need coverage, the community interests, but you and your family have supported and been a part of it. You've been a great asset to this community. I for one are going to miss you, and your work ethic, and your dedication to this fund, so... Thanks, Eric.
I lived out here for thirty-one years. And we've gone through lots of changes, but your leadership has been above and beyond, and you've made Lakeside City what we are. Um, just your genuine love for people, and your love for Lakeside. We appreciate you and your family. There's been lots and lots of positive things. I know there are a few naysayers that have come in and tried to ruin the bond that Lakeside City has, and that's a challenge. Because I think it's a very tight-knit group out here. Everybody wants to be us, everybody wants to be here, because we've got a great thing going on, and it's been a lot of your leadership.
Thank you, Charlie.
Here.
I'm not going to make it through this. I almost believe that I'm the same way as for you, selfishly, I do want you to stay, and I don't want to lose you on the committee. Because we've done some really good things. And it really is unfortunate that some people think that breaking others down is makes them feel better about themselves. But they're not going to win, and it's fine, they can think that they are. I love y'all's family, and there's no way that I won't back to one hundred and ten percent every single day, it doesn't matter. I hate this for the city, I hate it for everything, but we're going to make it through it. It's awful, but I'm sorry it happened, I wish it didn't, there are always going to be those people, but it'll be fine.
Thank you, Kim.
I want to say thank you both, been great. Leadership, inspiration to the people of the city, thank you for being neighbors, I look forward to that even more so now. I don't have a lot that they hadn't already covered, but I miss you, and I will see you on a regular basis, so thank you.
That's one of the ones that hired Eric, originals, and I remember going through the process, and you had a lot of people out of Metro Plague, the South Mountain State, and once I seen the money, and stayed in the small city, they all were like, oh my gosh, and Eric was the one who wanted to stay, and they're good for the city, because really, I mean, it's one different city. So I don't see what to say or anything like that, but during the whole process, you know, there's needs and wants, and, you know, we needed their water tower, I mean, it's, in fact, when the pictures are on the original council meeting, everything was falling apart, so we got it fixed, now nobody knows, and Eric came and found out, so getting it's still a work in progress, but that's the same thing, the fire station was, I mean, being out roaming the old city building...